Good evening. I would like to call the Marlboro School Committee meeting to order. Please rise as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Mr. Superintendent, we have some visitors today, don't we?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We have our first presentation tonight is the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. And the background on this is we encourage all of our students to read. And these students who are about to be presented have read 1,000 books before kindergarten. And I think Ms. Murphy and Ms. O'Brien are going to help us with announcing the students who have reached this great honor. I think Ms. Cinni as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome, boys and girls. I'm so happy that you're here today. Congratulations for reading 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. This program is fabulous. We have books in English, Spanish, and Portuguese that go home to all of the students that are enrolled at our school. And they go home and read the books with mom and dad and then bring them back to school. And then they're sent home with another book bag. So it runs all school year. And we're also affiliated with the Marlboro Public Library. And parents can keep track on an app on their phone as well. So congratulations. And we have a special little gift for you to continue reading throughout the summer.
The first student that we have that's read 1,000 books is Maya. We have two siblings that are going to come up together, I think. Rig and Meg. Can you come? The next student who's read 1,000 books is Luke. So we have Vincenzo, who is not here tonight, but I just wanted to recognize him. And is Arena here? So just to recognize those two students, we'll make sure that they get their books. And then the last student is Victor. Is Victor here? No? Okay. All right. So congratulations. Thank you.
Maybe we could have all of the students come up here and we could take a photo. How does that sound?
doing this all on their own. So thank you for supporting your children and their literacy.
And we post all the videos on our website so that way you can send it to family and brag about how many books you've read. Good job, everybody. Thank you.
See you in kindergarten. Bye. Bye. Oh, my God. My favorite day of the year. Next, we have our friend Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd like to recognize Jackson Clemmons. He's currently Marlboro High School student. He's a Richer School alum. Jackson is a Boy Scout who's currently working to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, very prestigious, and chose the Richer School for his picnic table project. One of the requirements for earning this rank of Eagle Scout is for the scout to plan and conduct a community-based service project. The picnic tables were built and have been dedicated to the kindergarten class and will sit beautifully outside the kindergarten wing. My recommendation is that the school committee congratulate Jackson on earning the rank of Eagle Scout and for building and donating the picnic tables to the Richer School. I'd like to recognize him, Jackson, if you would mind coming up. If there's anything else you'd like to share about your project. It's an incredible honor to be an Eagle Scout. So congratulations to you.
Thank you. I'm Jackson, as you've just heard. And I'm glad to have been able...
You're doing great.
Okay. And I'm glad to have been able to do this for Richer. I'm happy that I was able to give back. And if that means building picnic tables, then I'm glad that I could do so. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
And if it pleases the committee, I would ask that we move up the acceptance of the picnic tables from donations and gifts so that way we can accept the donation while Jackson is here.
Absolutely.
Can we also acknowledge how wonderful Jackson has been on his musical prowess as well? Because we didn't get to see him in person, but you've done yeoman's job, especially getting through COVID and taking on lots of stuff for the music program. So good for you, too.
Thank you.
I was very happy I was at the Richer School and I got to see the picnic tables firsthand. And I know Dr. Scazza is here tonight because he's very appreciative as well. And they look gorgeous. They're wonderful. It's going to be a great addition to the school. So very much thank you. And I didn't know if, Madam Vice Chair, if you would like to move up the donation.
Do we need a vote to do that?
Suspension of the rules on our end.
We shall do that. So, the Jackson Clemmons Eagle Scout project for the Richer Elementary School, picnic tables, the cost approximately $1,200.
Yep.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing one, all in favor? Posed, carries. They are accepted.
Thank you so much.
Moving on. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. My first item is asking for an additional 1.0 FTE for the first grade at Kane Elementary. Tonight, I'm asking the committee to consider removing $69,602 from the FY23 Salary Reserve account to hire an additional 1.0 first-grade teacher at Kane Elementary. Below, I've given you the enrollment projections for next year. And as you can see on the chart, I labeled three positions in orange. The two positions at Good Now have already been approved via the FY23 budget, so there's no additional action needed on either one of those. We've already added those. What I am looking for is to add one additional position at Kane, partially due to the fact that right now they only have four classrooms. And with the four classrooms and 94 students, they're at approximately 24 students in that grade right now. So it would not take a lot of enrollment for that to be at 25, 26. And after this year, I'm just trying to be as conservative as possible and make sure that we keep our class sizes as competitive as we possibly can moving forward. So I am asking for the transfer, but we don't actually have... The budget's not actually in Munis yet. So what I'm asking for basically is permission to post the position. Doug will... I'm sorry. Mr. Diaz will perform the transfer once we have a live budget, and that would probably be in your first meeting in the fall to do that. We have enough money in the salary reserve line. I think Doug, if I remember right off the top of my head, was about $208,000. So this would remove about a third from the salary reserve, but not unlike anything we've done in the past couple of years. So we feel pretty comfortable with that. So I am looking to the school committee to kind of give me a feedback and potentially permission to move ahead and post that position. We'd love to be hiring for it now instead of waiting for the fall. So that's my first item. And I have a couple more, and I'm asking for participation. So you might want to wait till the end or do it now. I leave that up to the committee.
So vote on this now? Yeah, that's fine. Ms. Samsi?
So, how'd you know? No, I just wanted you all to know, just in case. I did reach out to the superintendent and the upcoming superintendent to have a quick discussion because as we were going through the schools, we... For the staff appreciation, we were talking about some of the different space issues that we are running into. And it's not... I mean, obviously, things are going to be moved around and things will be tight because our numbers have increased. But we are not looking at anything that would be detrimental as far as any of the curriculum instruction, anything like that. So everything's really been thoroughly thought through. And I thought, since I had asked that, I wanted to make sure that you guys were all on the same page with that information, that that has been addressed. And so there's not going to be a space issue in allocating the new classroom situation. So, thanks.
Any other discussion?
No, I'm in support of the adding a teacher for that school.
Should we just make a motion to move it forward?
So it's not in action items?
It's not an action item because I can't actually do the transfer yet. So what we're asking for is just permission to post it. So we'll post it, and then Mr. Diaz will bring a transfer in the first meeting in the fall.
So could I make a motion to give permission so that administration and superintendent could go ahead and post the position? Knowing that...
And when we get to number nine?
Well, we could do a suspension of the rules then. So, how about that? I'd like to make a motion for a suspension of the rules so we could vote on a motion now relative to this concept.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, carries.
Excellent. So now I'd like to make a motion to allow for permission for the posting to happen relative to this position and for you all to keep us updated along the way so that we know where things stand, obviously, prior to things being loaded in Munis.
That was a long motion.
Yes, it was. I can't wait for it to be written.
Motion made and seconded to give permission to post the additional classroom at Kane School. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, carries.
Thank you. My second item is to talk about school choice seats from Good Now to Richer. Policy 8.090 grants the superintendent authority to make exceptions to district lines for individual children in the best interests of the student or school. In following this policy, I do believe in the best interests of both Richer and Good Now is to open up a few school choice seats in the early elementary grades. To be clear, only Good Now Zoned families could participate and send their children to Richer as a permanent choice. Transportation would be the responsibility of the family, or the student can take one of the existing Richer bus stops. We can't create new bus stops within another zoned area. I'm proposing to open up five school choice seats in both kindergarten and first grade. Families could choose to enroll their children permanently at the Richer School this fall in those two grades. This effort is to try to keep class sizes normalized as possible between the two schools. If we have more than five family requests, we can hold a lottery, or we could decide we could accommodate all of them, depending on how many we have. There may be enough families who have childcare needs, and this school choice seat may be able to solve that issue for a few families. We can use the exist... I'm sorry. We can use this enrollment management method of choice seats while the city is still considering its next construction project. While the policy grants the authority, I do want feedback from the committee before making a recommendation. We have done this, I think, a long time ago. When I first got here, we had a few, and we have not done this for a very long time. So I would like the committee to give me some feedback because we should be moving on this relatively soon.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mrs. Matthews?
I'm a little concerned with this, only I just feel like it's a rabbit hole. I know my mic is on. I know that we have issues with overcrowding. I get that. But one of the words in the second paragraph, "Families could choose to enroll their child permanently," that permanently bothers me for two reasons. One is it may not be permanent because at some point we may draw lines again prior to whatever replaces Richer or whatever construction project there is if that time comes, if it's within the five years, whatever. I just... I don't... I'm just... There's just something about it that I'm uneasy with, and I can't put my finger exactly on, other than I feel like what's going to stop another parent from Good Now saying, "Well, that average class size is low over at Kane. Why can't I go to Kane instead?" And I know it's directed. It says this is what we're doing, but does it create a bigger issue down the road? So that's...
Question? Mrs. Ryan?
How would this be communicated to families about the opportunity?
We would message home to the Good Now families. So they're the ones who really would have the opportunity, and that's the school where we're the most over-enrolled. And that's when you go back to the first page and look at the enrollments, you can see the kindergarten and the first grade projection for Richer is slightly under-enrolled, if I will. So they're about 17 to 18 per seat, and Good Now is closer to 21.
Have there been families that have expressed that they would like to go there? Because maybe they're on the line or daycare issues or...
So when we did the... When I go in the Wayback Machine, if you will, when we were doing the district realignment, I did have a lot of families who were saying their daycare was in Richer, and this is a bit of a hassle for them. Fortunately, we had a lot of good opportunities for before and after-school care, but still there was people who wanted to do that. Because we don't offer intra-school choice between our elementaries, and that has just been kind of like a static answer, I don't get a lot of that feedback because it really doesn't come to me that often because the schools generally answer that question before it comes to the superintendent's office.
I'm not opposed to it. Like how you mentioned, the permanently is a little like it could be, you know, they can't... Like, I understand you don't want them switching back and forth, but, you know, maybe in, you know, they're... A different phrase needs to be inserted there, you know, as long as, you know, lines aren't drawn, you know, whatever. You know what I mean?
I do.
Yeah.
Mrs. Samsi?
So I actually was very much in support because I looked at the class size numbers, as you had said. And when I look at the first and kindergarten, with it currently being 17, it is at some of the lowest of class sizes. I do think that it is critical that some language be in there that would not allow for, "I'm not happy. I need to go ahead and make a change again." Because I think that just really causes too much upheaval. And so I do think the language is going to be important. That would set that up. But I think it's a great opportunity of providing to keep class sizes still in our reasonable realm and potentially to help to bring down the number at Good Now just a hair, which just helps overall. But I felt good about it when I saw that this was an idea that could happen. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Mr. Caruso?
I know this is probably asking to be... Asking to be a... Maybe a genie or a seer, but do you have any idea now how many people might consider this, if you put it out there?
No. No, we really don't. I think one of the considerations for elementary school that we've seen is that childcare plays a major role in these decisions. So if they happen to have, you know, I'm just going to say grandma, grandpa lives on the richer side of the town, and they can take a bus to and from, that works really well for families. And when we're talking about this many children in a school, we're talking... I mean, it's 120 to 140 students. We may get a handful who say, "Absolutely, that would be helpful to me as a family to be able to do this moving forward." The issue is, and kind of like what I was alluding to, we haven't had this in so long that really I don't have any feedback on it because we've just said no for so long. Because people would say, "Do you do..." And we just say, "No, we don't do any school choice between the schools."
Now, would there be anything other than a childcare issue that would be a parameter for moving?
Yeah, there's... If you look at the line that separates the Good Now Zone from the Richer Zone, there is zones where it's actually much closer to the home for Richer than it is for Good Now. So if you look at like the southern part of the city, if you will, I'm trying to like look at the map the right way. Unlike the southern part, there's certainly a couple of neighborhoods that are actually much closer to Richer than they are to Good Now, if you just use, just, you know, "by the crow flies." So that could be something that a family who drives their student might say, "It's easier for me to drop off at Richer and get it right on the highway." And, you know, there might be something along those lines as well.
Because I think that's sort of my concern as well, is that if you have to make determinations or decisions about who does and who doesn't do this, if you make one based on a certain criteria and someone else has the same exact criteria, are they going to be extremely unhappy that that's the reason they didn't get it?
We would just do a lottery. Yeah, we would never choose... I mean, if we only had four applicants, just accept them all. If we had seven, we might say, "We're only accepting five because we wanted to keep it tight." Then you could do a lottery, and it's about as fair as it can get.
That'd be my only concern, is the dynamics that happens when people don't get chosen for the...
Just so I'm clear, it's five total seats kindergarten if it's...
Five per grade, I'm sorry.
It is five per grade, so it's ten.
If you look at K and one, they're both about 17 to 18 in their size. So they could handle the five students, and it really wouldn't... It's just creating a little bit of elbow room and also trying to get Good Now to... Trying to get it to about 120. That's the goal. Because 120 divided by six, and that's kind of... You can see how you can have a class size of about 20 all the way through the schooling career.
I just want to make sure I understood. Do you need a vote from us tonight?
Feedback is helpful. It's one of those things that we can do. There's other things we can do. I think this is the good first step. If we continue to see other issues with enrollment, the next step might be to carve out streets, not do a total realignment. But when you start carving out streets, now you're moving kids who might have already been moved, and that gets into a whole nother list of issues. The other thing we can start doing is probably looking at kindergarten enrollment and start saying, "This is now a kindergarten street. Unless you already have children in the other school, you now go to the Richer School instead of Good Now." So those would be like the second and third steps. This is the first step, and then you can kind of wait to see what happens.
Sorry. Logistically, are you anticipating if we were to give you a, "Yeah, please go ahead and look down this road," when are you envisioning on trying to make that decision? Just because I'm thinking that some of these folks, from a kindergarten standpoint especially, you know, they're going to try in their own minds on getting a kid set to transition. So I have a feeling that might be something that's going to be in communities' minds about like, are you thinking that something's going to try and be decided in like mid-July? Early August?
Yeah. I think we would try to first communicate it hopefully by the end of school.
Right.
So that way, we get the kindergarten students who are currently there.
Right.
And then we have a batch of kindergarten students who are enrolling right now. So I think there's two levels. And I think for the kindergarten students who are currently there, you might have some siblings who are coming in as kindergartners. So that might be... That might help a little bit as well. So the first communication could go out relatively soon, see what their interest is, and we might just get nothing. And we might be sitting and coming back at the next meeting saying, "That didn't work. We didn't get any interest. We need to start thinking about Plan B, Plan C, so on and so forth."
Okay.
So because we... There was a policy that says that you can't go to schools outside of your district. I think we need to amend. We don't necessarily have to change the policy, but we have to at least suspend it for this year, and that would be an action item. So would you like us to do that?
I could bring down the 28th because we... I mean, we still have another meeting, so...
Yeah, I was going to say, we actually have a policy meeting coming up later this week so we could look at some kind of an additional line.
Doesn't the policy give him...
It does give him latitude, but I'm thinking that we could also take a look at the policy and if we needed to make some kind of a line amendment, we could add something.
And I don't think we need to change the policy.
No, I don't think that there's a major, but, you know, I'm just thinking that we can take another, a closer look and then bring it forward on the 28th if necessary.
Okay. You're good with that timeline?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the committee is... I'm getting thumbs up enough that I can send out a message to parents and just basically we're going to test the waters.
See what the interest is, yeah.
We want to see what the interest is. And if it's a huge interest, then we have a secondary problem, which is how we handle this much interest. Good. Okay. I saw enough thumbs. I saw enough thumbs to move forward. Thoughts on graduation? I just want to say, wonderful event. I appreciate all the planning and execution that happened before we walked onto the field. Guys, that was the extent of my work. I just walked onto the field. I love the outdoor graduation. I'm just going to put that out there. I think it was well-received by everyone who attended. Thank you to the mayor, said some kind words in his speech, and I look forward to the committee's feedback for Principal Riley. I know Jonathan, you're here as well. Wonderful job with the acapella, wonderful job with the band. I was so happy to have that as part of the ceremony. So thank you. I don't know if anybody else had any feedback they wanted to give or...
Yeah, I'll add, I loved that you had some alumni come back and play in the band. It was really great to see some of those kids, and they were just beaming to be able to be... It was really fun. Yeah. Oh, I thought it was great. You know, a couple little ways to maybe move people around, like I thought having all the kids under the tent, nobody could really see them. But that's easy-peasy things. It was great. Hennessy?
Of course. And I... It was the first graduation I've had to actually not be here for, which was really kind of hard. But I have to say, the live stream was great, and kudos, as always, to Jill and WMCT TV for making it happen. It's great. And I have to say, it was really evident that there were a lot of family members, you know, and friends that were watching graduates, you know, from wherever they were, which I think is a great element to have. So I think it's fantastic. Keep it going. Thanks.
Mrs. Ryan?
It was fantastic, I will say. And in fact, it was chilly under the tent.
It was chilly. No sun.
I know people in the sun were probably fried, but it was chilly in the tent. The one thing I do miss, though, is not knowing where the graduates are going and what scholarships they earned, which we used to see on the screen when we had it at the high school, which I don't know how you can incorporate that in the outdoor event. And I seem to recall the first COVID year, which was 2020, they did announce that when they graduated, but maybe that's too much to announce.
I believe Mr. Riley or Dr. Riley's comment was, he was trying to keep it to 90 minutes.
Okay. So maybe that adds too much to it. I don't know. But I do miss that. But I know it was part of the live stream, so I did go back and actually, I did kind of watch part of it. But I don't know if there's a way to... I don't know. I don't know how to fix that, but...
Good feedback for you.
I miss that, but I do also enjoy it outside. So maybe you take the good with, you know, you get what you get, so...
I don't know how far in advance they have to print the booklets, but maybe it could go into the booklet.
It might be a good way to have all the information in one place.
Yeah. I mean, and I know in the booklet, it does list the scholarships, but it lists the scholarships by name and not necessarily the student. Like, you don't know that, like, one student maybe got five scholarships. You have to kind of look around. Like, when it was on the screen, you could see, like, so and so. it was on the screen, you could see, like, so and so got five scholarships. Yeah. But anyway, it was truly, it was, it was a great, it was great to see the speeches live and see everybody graduate together. And it was impressive that you were, were able to fit all of the attendees' parents and families all there together. So.
And it was a large class, too.
It was great. So kudos to everybody involved in setting it up and getting it done.
Great. Any other comments?
Okay, my last item, I just, a quick update on the alumni project. We've entered graduates from 1954 through 1975 as of today into the database, which is about 4,200 MPS grads. We are working, it's, it's progressing nicely. So I expect through the end of this week, we're going to have through 1981 entered. And then by next week, we should probably be in the nineties. So we're, we're doing quick work and getting through all of that. We additionally have gathered all of the electronic data. So we have through 2022 entered, which is an additional 4,000 records. And we're, we're doing well. We do have a vendor, GGNA, Greensback, Klier and Associates. They're a nationally known firm for fund, fundraising and alumni development. And they're going to be meeting with some folks and gathering some feedback. So I'm actually looking for two volunteers from the school committee to do a Zoom interview with one of our consultants, who's going to ask some questions and get some feedback about the direction the school committee would like to see for this project and the things that you would like to see incorporated into it as well. I would expect interviews to be about a half an hour long, maybe 45 minutes if there's a lot of questions. So I am looking for two volunteers to jump into the fray.
Someone old school, really old school.
Okay.
Is it a conflict of interest if you're in the database?
No. No, it's a good thing.
The first one that come looking for money, do I?
All right.
Do you want us to volunteer now or just let you know?
Hands went up, so I didn't.
That was quick.
Yeah.
He doesn't have enough on our plate as it is, so. This is done. I'm all good.
I'm good. So that, that's my report for tonight.
All right. Any further questions for the superintendent? Seeing none. Mrs. Murphy?
Good evening. Later this week, we will be surveying all students in grades three through 11 and all Marlboro Public School employees. We will be using a new tool, Panorama Surveys. This tool will also be used throughout the next year to survey students, teachers, and parents. Parent, Panorama Surveys are designed to help schools and districts process feedback in four areas: student voice, school climate, teacher and staff voice, and family and community engagement. In July, I will be sending out a survey designed to collect feedback from all of our families. All of the surveys are also translated in multiple languages. On July 20th, members of the district leadership team will be trained by a panorama on how to build surveys, collect data, and interpret these results. We will use this baseline data to identify additional areas of focus in FY '23. These surveys will also be used as a tool across multiple strategies for improvement. I'm going a little off script right now. Before I ask Mr. Turcot to address the committee, I would like to update the committee on the search for a new Director of Instructional Technology. It is my pleasure to announce that Mr. Christopher Henry, current Marlboro Public Schools Instructional Technology Specialist, has accepted the position. Mr. Henry joined Marlboro Public Schools as a Marlboro High School English teacher in 2007. He taught English for 10 years before he transitioned to the Instructional Technology Specialist role in 2017. He has been a supportive team member that is focused on integrating technology into teaching and learning throughout the district. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Henry to the new, his new district leadership role.
Do you want to come up and say anything?
I'll, I'll even hit the clock.
Please, I don't know how to use technology.
Sorry. It's too late now, I guess. I would like to just take a minute to thank Mary Murphy and Jody O'Brien and Superintendent Bergeron on nominating me and like, kind of appointing me for this position. Teaching in Marlboro has been an absolute pleasure the last 15 years. I cannot think of any other place I want to continue my career and continue to serve the students, the staff, and the community of Marlboro. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr., Mr. Turcot, Supervisor of Wellness, would like to address the committee regarding the Wellness Department's request to name the adventure course as the Marlboro Public Schools Kenneth Reynolds Adventure Course in recognition of former Marlboro Public Schools teacher Kenneth Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds is a former Marlboro teacher, coach, mentor to many staff members, a parent, as well as a community member. Mr. Turcot?
Did Mr. Henry screw me up? Are we good? We're good. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. As you know, we went through quite the process to get a brand-new adventure course over at the high school. I would not be doing my due diligence if I didn't say thank you again to Mr. Bergeron for making sure that that gun got done and you guys over the last few years, when we lost it and got it back. Now, if you go down to our pit area near the high school, you will see a state-of-the-art adventure course that most schools would be dying to have. So it's beautiful. Mr. Cormier, our Project Adventure teacher, is not here tonight. His son is in a playoff baseball game from Marlboro Youth Baseball. But I do have some support over there with Ms. Ryder, Mr. Nelson, PE teachers in the district. Mr. Reynolds was here for over 30 years. He was a PE teacher and Project Adventure instructor when I got here 20 years ago. I shared an office with him. He was Teacher of the Year in 1998, MHS Athletic Hall of Fame, a keynote speaker at the NHS induction. Mr. Reynolds is Marlboro Public Schools High School Wellness. We did some research, my colleagues over there, and spoke to some people that were around, as Kenny was around before us, Bill Rigney, Dutch Holland, Mary Kelleher, Rich Riley, names you guys all know as Marlboro people. And we got quotes, for example, when you were around Kenny, you wanted to be a better person. He treated everybody with respect. No matter who you were, no matter what you did, that's how Kenny treated you, with respect. So I'm here to ask, and I'm not even sure how to word it correctly, so forgive me, I would like for us as a district to acknowledge Mr. Reynolds in the fall with a small ceremony, a plaque that we can place down on one of the brand-new poles that will be there for forever, and dedicate that program to Mr. Kenny Reynolds.
That's great. We're allowed to do that, right? I, the mayor walked in. We'll sit, yeah.
The naming of, the naming of buildings is a city council function.
But nobody said anything about an, an adventure course.
That's on the city charter.
I don't know if it's a charter issue. Sounds like ours.
I don't think so either. He, he walked in. We'll have to ask the mayor when he makes his presence.
No, we don't have to ask the mayor. Let's just move on this one. Hurry up, before he show, before he comes back. We got a lot of pull here.
Mrs. Nelson's wife had Kenny Reynolds as a PE teacher years ago. So, I mean, apparently we have another one, too.
Why can't we just make a motion?
You want to do it before he gets here? I don't think he can hear us right now.
I think the mayor's going to be all behind this. Let's make a motion to name the adventure course after Kenneth Reynolds.
Second, if no one else.
Yeah. Great, thanks. Dan seconded. We have a motion, we have a second.
You didn't suspend the rules.
Whatever, let's, okay, I'll ask for a suspension of the rules.
You're not getting involved. You can sit.
I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules, please, so we can take up an action item relative to the adventure course.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules.
Thank you. Now I'd like to make-
Any discussion?
Ah, come on, let's move.
Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Your rules are suspended.
Thank you so much. Now I'd like to make a formal motion to name the adventure course that's over in the pit, the Kenneth Reynolds Adventure Course.
Be a formal second, I guess, now as well.
Formal, thanks.
Motion made and seconded to name the adventure course, the Marlboro Public Schools Kenneth Reynolds Adventure Course. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, carries.
Let's make a pledge.
Absolutely. So that will be the plan. We'll, we'll get Mr. Reynolds and his family, who's all in Marlboro. His wife, Mary, was in the district for a long time as a teacher. We'll get them, his son, down in the pit. We'll, we'll hang that plaque or banner or whatever we can get.
And we all have to like walk the monkey rope or something like that, right?
You're going to do the zip line, every single one of you.
The mayor's leading us on that one.
We're all waiting for an invitation.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We will get you down in the fall. And if you choose, we will get you up in the air as well.
How high, how high is it?
Oh, it's 30 or 40 feet. It's not that bad.
You have to wear a helmet.
I'll bring my camera.
Thank you all, and have a good night. I appreciate it.
And Mary, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. You taking over?
No, keep going. You're doing good.
Okay. Acceptance of minutes of May 24th, school committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Yeah, since I wasn't here, I don't know how I managed to vote to go into executive session. So that needs to be corrected. I was not at that meeting, so.
Thank you for that. I will amend that. So motion to approve. You were here.
I was just watching.
Uh, motion made and seconded to approve with one amendment. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, carries. Public participation. Anyone from the public wishing to participate? State your name and address for the record, please.
You don't have to use your address.
You can use the school.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Mary Ellen Klein, an English teacher and the advisor for this student-
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee and also student council, 431 Bolton Street. I'm a teacher at Marlboro High School. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Hattie Parker and all of her contributions to this group for the duration of this school year and announce that all elections have been completed and Jessica Rosenzweig will be the student representative for the following school year. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I've been like a student advisor participating in presentations for the past two years and it's been such a great experience and an honor. And I'm really looking forward to sitting on the board next year and like, learning more.
Great. Look forward to working with you. Congratulations. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, action items. Festival of Music Trip.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'm going to invite up Mr. Rosenthal, our K-12 Supervisor of Music, to talk about a wonderful opportunity for our students to have a great opportunity in Boston to, for assessment and for ensembles. Please take it away, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Superintendent Bergeron. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. Nice to be here. As this year winds down, I can't help but be so proud of my music staff and the music students as I attend the concerts at the elementary schools, at the Whitcomb School, at the high school. The high school participated in a Grady's Festival for the day, and we had our own festival at Whitcomb recently. I want to continue to build on that momentum. So thus the request to attend a national festival that happens to be located right near Boston, and we would spend some time in the city, giving our kids that experience. So the recommendation, I have two options. We're going to be, as if this is approved, we're going to start planning and seeing how much it costs. And most likely, we will do a one-night festival, but I wanted the option for a two-night, if that works. So the recommendation is in front of you.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Mrs. Hennessy?
So this is a new festival situation that you guys are looking at overall?
So Festivals of Music is a company that we've used in the past. It is a similar company that we've used in Virginia Beach, in Washington. We're just going to kind of stay local, but it's still a national festival.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, carries.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much, everybody.
Yes, so you have the option. And you'll let us know what you decide?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. MHS Overnight Trip.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. For the past nine years, we've spent an entire day practicing with the Wachusett Regional High School. The Wachusett coaching staff has invited MHS for the overnight. And this will, I'm sorry, this will be the seventh year we've stayed for the night. So the MHS football team is requesting to spend the evening on August 26th at the Eagle Hill School in Hardwick, Mass. It is an overnight trip, so it would require approval from the school committee. And again, this is, would be the seventh year we've done this.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, carries. MHS Out of State Day Trip.
Sorry. For the previous four years, the boys, varsity and junior varsity teams have scrimmaged, scrimmaged at Avon Old Farms in Connecticut. Again, this is an out-of-state field trip, although they're not staying over. They have done this for the previous four years, and we are seeking approval to continue this scrimmage opportunity in Connecticut for the soccer team.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, carries. Student, oh, they left. Student advisory, change of dates for meetings. So this was based on Jessica's suggestion that we change the dates that the student advisory, students come to speak with us. Our policy specifies the months that they come to speak with us, but as opposed to mass general law that just says every other month. So it's my understanding that we have two policies that address this. Seems awfully confusing, Mrs. Hennessy.
So that was something that came up this week, and Ms. Bilio and I had that conversation. So the, there is a policy that is, policy number 2.223.
And 8.110.
Then there is the current policy that Ms. Bodenhendinger was referencing, which is 8.110. They're very similar, but they do have like minor, minor, minor differences.
And they're also in different chapters.
And they're, yes.
That's why.
Yes, they are.
But why do we have two? I mean, why do we need to cover the same topic in two different chapters?
Because that's what MASC did originally.
Says they, right?
I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it's, it's a place that you don't have.
So for our purposes, you know, one is you can decide in policy what you want to do about having two policies. But for this-
Relative to the information that you're discussing, that is housed, if you will, in the 8.110 policy, right?
Correct.
So we do, as mentioned previously, we have a policy subcommittee meeting coming up on Thursday. So it's up to you all- So, it's up to you all how, you know, how you would like for us to move forward, because we can go ahead and make a change to that policy within the subcommittee meeting on Thursday. I personally, after reviewing all of this, I think it is redundant, even though it is in two different chapters, and so I was going to make a suggestion to our subcommittee, and I'm sure we'll discuss it there, for a removal of one of the policies, because I don't think we really need to have it in two different places. I think that causes confusion, and I think, you know, personally, I think the idea of going back to the statement of the every other month, which is more like mass general law, I think makes a lot more sense as to the specific designation of what month. I think the idea that they brought forward was great, but I don't think that there's a need personally that we have to designate what month. That said, we can certainly go back to the policy subcommittee, retool it, and bring it forward again, but your feedback would be appropriate to help us make sure that we bring it back exactly how you all would proceed. Thanks.
Mrs. Matthews.
So, I support sending it back to the policy subcommittee, since it is a policy. I also agree, just stating every other month as MGL states. I like their recommendation of starting it in October, September, they have no idea what they're doing yet, and they usually don't even have the freshman class representative in September yet.
Okay.
And that is governed by the SAC advisor at that point, stating that if it starts in, you know, the school committee says it starts in October, then it's every other month. And the second meeting of the month, not the first, or the second in May, it was still the first and the others are.
So what they, what they requested, what Jessica had recommended was October, December, February, April, and June, but because graduation comes so early in June, we discussed a little bit about it and thought perhaps making it the second meeting in May would, I'm sure, suffice for master general law. So, but I would suggest not putting the specific dates back in the policy, because it makes it less flexible should they want to change it again.
Somebody somewhere should have a calendar of when we're expecting them.
Patty Sivilio keeps the master calendar, and that's why she always knows when they're coming, but we would just instruct her that those were the new months.
And I would say, once, once we do formally approve whatever the revision is to the appropriate policy, we could always then forward that as well to Dan and Ms. Klein directly, since it affects them and their building specific with that group. Just to make sure that they're aware.
So, did we make a motion? We didn't, no.
No.
It was just moving it back to, we're gonna table it and move it back to subcommittee, right?
Okay.
Motion to table.
Motion. Motion made and seconded to table.
Motion to send to the policy subcommittee.
Sure.
That one, we have discussion. So, motion made and seconded to send it to policy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, carries. I would entertain a motion to table the superintendent evaluation, because it is not yet complete.
Motion to table.
Motion made and seconded to table. No discussion on the table, all in favor? Pose, carries. Exception of donations and gifts.
Read them, or you want me to read them?
Oh, knock yourself out, we already did that one. We did number four.
Blackbaum Giving Fund Bose Corporation, Kane Elementary School, $30.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Shutterfly, Kane Elementary School, $804.85.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor? Pose, carries. All those in favor of the first $30? All those opposed? Carries. Middlesex District Attorney, MHS All Night, $500.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pose, carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reports of school committee subcommittees.
Guess what?
Mrs. Hennessy.
We have a policy subcommittee meeting. It's gonna be on the 16th. I think now we know a few items that might be on the agenda. There you have it.
Excellent. Mrs. Matthews.
We have reached an agreement with the cafeteria, but we don't have contract packet, do we? They ratified, but have we received that back?
Did we vote?
No, because we need to bring it back to.
We received word that it was ratified, but we have to bring it back to the full committee vote here.
Okay.
So, next meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Please, Mr. Deals, thank you.
Put that on your ticket, Deals. That's it for the subcommittees. Members forum. Mrs. Hennessy, Mrs. Matthews, sorry.
She, I'm sure she has.
It's automatic. Mrs. Matthews.
I have reviewed the warrant, and I will be signing it, but I also, you know, we talked a little bit about graduation, and we couldn't have lucked out anymore. It was a perfect day. It was a great time to have everybody together. I mean, we did so well the last two years, but getting everybody out there was just fabulous. And little tweaks, as the vice chair said, and we can make it even better, so I want to thank everybody and congratulate everybody, and that's it.
Yeah, guess what?
Hennessy.
I'm actually not gonna be here at the next meeting, and it only just hit me that I wanted to say thank you publicly. Didn't know what was coming when it came, but thank you for all that you've done for the district and for the community and for the school committee. Mayor, you did a great job, and thank you for the comments that you said of graduation, even though I was not here, I was watching.
Did you listen?
I did.
All right then.
You got me. So, but thank you very much for all of your guidance and leading us through a pretty tumultuous couple of years that none of us could have ever envisioned that we were gonna have to go through, but I can truly say from the bottom of my heart, boy, am I really happy that it was you. You were the right person to have to work with all of us at that time. You pulled us all together to have some crazy discussion meetings about things that, again, we would have never thought we were gonna have to do. And you were calm, you were focused, you were able to listen and to give feedback and be part of a team, but take the lead when you needed to. And it's not an easy role, and you did it quite well. So, thank you for all that you've done on behalf of so many students, all of our staff, and for this community, because you helped to guide us through a pretty rocky time, and we made it through, as far as I'm gonna say, shining. Do we have things to continue to improve on? All the time, because if we can't look within ourselves and find things to improve, then we really aren't, you know, there, because we're not being realistic. But, thank you for everything, and I wish you well. I hate saying it, as I said to you when you called me, this is not the news I wanted, and that's nothing against you, Mary, it's just, it was literally one of those, really? So, I'm excited to hear about your future, and I hope that you will stay a part of Marlborough from afar, because you have and you will be a part of Marlborough always, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Caruso, would you like to be heard?
I feel like I should have said this first, and I so apologize, because that should have been the way we ended this meeting, but I just did want to say, I should have said this when Mr. Rosenthal was here, I was fortunate and honored to be asked to adjudicate the middle school ensemble festival. First of all, he made my ear, I told him that. Those kids were unbelievable, they were eager, they listened to everything they were told, and they were just absolutely phenomenal performers. I'm so happy, we have so many kids involved. When I looked at that stage, and I remember when I was in high school, one group we had, we had one group, and we had about half that many kids in one group that they had in one group there. So to see three times as many kids on a stage, just, we have such a great program here, and I just wanted to make sure that, I just made note of that, and I wish I'd said it when Mr. Rosenthal was here, and I apologize for stepping on that beautiful tribute to the superintendent, and I apologize.
No, no.
Anyway. I'll be really, I'll be really quick.
Take your time.
So, I just want to acknowledge, though, you did do a pretty good job pre-COVID, too, so I don't know if that's been said, because it's all about from 2020 on, but I just want that acknowledged, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose. We are adjourned at 8:34.